The Board of Trustees of the People's Democratic Party has set up a reconciliatory committee to meet with Rivers State Governor Yusom Wike over the fallout of the presidential primaries and the nomination of vice presidential candidate for the party. Chairman of the party's BOT Senator Walid Jibrin says the committee, which will be chaired by Atiku Abubakar, has 13 governors of the party as members. The members between the committee and Governor Wike will take place, the meeting I should say, whilst the party chairman Iroche Ayew and the presidential candidate Atiku Abubakar return from vacation abroad. The extensive committee will also comprise the vice presidential candidate Governor Ifan Yokoa, members of the National Working Committee, and others include former governors of the party and party elders from various zones of the country. All right, a lot is going on. Tundu?
Yes, indeed. I suppose it is in order. The party, PDP, has to do every single thing to keep that house united as they head into the battle royale that's going to be the general elections next year. PDP, the last thing they want is another four years or eight years potentially in the political Siberia of opposition. And regarding Alajja Atiku Abubakar, I mean, I usually don't like to talk about him, but we're approaching a sad anniversary in my family. So I'm thinking how this is such a full circle moment for Atiku Abubakar. You'll recall the 1993 elections. He had wanted to be, you know, the presidential flag bearer for SDP, but he did not prevail at the convention. He had stepped down in favor of my dad, well, daddy to me, MKAB, and others. And on the condition or with the hopes that he would be named as a vice president for that ticket, it was arranged because he was obviously in the very powerful political machinery of the late, great General Yaradua. But there were so many different options before my dad. There was General DeBrian Babangida telling him to choose Pascal Baffia as his VP or who will not hand over to him. There were the SDP governors, minus two, Remo Olushagun Shaba and Kolapu Ishola. All the other SDP governors were insisting on Baba Ghana Kingi Be. And then there was the Yaradua political machine who wanted Atiku Abubakar. We all know that he ended up going with Baba Ghana Kingi Be. And Alajja Atiku Abubakar was extremely hurt by that because he had stepped down. And he didn't really, it wasn't made any better by the fact that he eventually did become vice president. In fact, I'd say the most powerful vice president in the history of this country in the first term of the Abassandra Atiku administration. It's something he kept talking about, he kept raising it in interviews. So this goes to show for me, he knows exactly that sting that Governor Wike must be feeling because surely you'd have thought with the way the June 12 election was announced, but I think he just wanted to be on the right side of history in that struggle. And also a slight, like I was saying yesterday, remains a slight. People are not that easy to bring back on side once they have been offended. I quoted Machiavelli yesterday, and I will again, you must either caress people or annihilate them. If you just manage to irritate them, they will deal with you. You're going to just create resentment. And that book, The Prince, is not about war, it's all about politics. So that's just a fact. So the fact that they are now realizing the damage that has been done to the relationship between Governor Wike and his party before it's too late, I think is really encouraging. The fact that they have this high-powered delegation that's trying to throw every single thing at it is also in order because it has been reported that Governor Wike is so upset, he's not even taking phone calls. So you have to go beyond the stage of phone calls and have a face-to-face conversation. Some kind of detente should hopefully happen at some point with regards to this matter so PDP can get its act together and as far as they're concerned, have a better chance of winning because this election, you cannot take anything for granted. I remember the last election, a lot of PDP supporters said quite presumptuously that, oh, PDP is going to win. Can't people see how they're suffering under APC? Well, we all know how that turned out. You can never be complacent. So you have to really do your very best to give yourself a fighting chance.
Dr. Abasi?
Well, Tundu, beware who you quote. When we say Machiavelli, and he speaks to the basic instincts of man, that when we look for values, we look for ideals, we probably should rise above Machiavelli.
I disagree with you. That poor man. I think he's got a bad rap over history. He was just showing us how princes behave and misbehave.
Yeah, or how they should behave. We had, we once had a Machiavellian general in power here. We know what we went through. Let's get to this subject. Now, Senator Walid Jibrin is setting up a nine-member committee. And he made that very clear on Sunday that these nine persons, led by the presidential stand-up biara for the PDP, Alajja Atiku Abubakar, will lead the charge, including also his running mate, to go to Portacot to appeal to Governor Wike and his supporters and to appease him and to bring him back into the fold. Now, Senator Jibrin, when he was making that point, also said that, look, all the troublemakers within the party who are stoking the embers of disunity and acrimony should please sheen their swords because for the party to be able to put up a good showing or win or wrestle rest their power from the APC in 2023, they must present a united front. So the position of the BOT chairman, Board of Trustees chairman, aligns with that of Alajja Atiku Abubakar himself, who says that his task is to ensure unity within the party, within the community, and within the larger Nigerian society. We've made a point here that, yes, Wike's supporters insist, and his supporters include former Plateau State Governor Jonah Jank, former, no, current Benue State Governor Samuel Autumn, former Ikiti State Governor Peter Ayew Fayoshi, who said that the man has been short-changed, that this is the same man who carried the burden of the party on his back like Atlas carrying a load, like Sisyphus carrying a load and grappling with it. And that when it was time for him to be rewarded, he was disappointed, first time, second time. Even Tambua, whom we had helped and supported in the past, was in fact the man who was the first to ditch him like Peter betrayed our Lord Jesus, you know, in some other circumstances. Okay, so it's good to have peace in the party as part of strategy to unify the party. However, Wike's supporters are giving conditions. One major condition that they are giving is that the party flag biara, Atiku Abubakar, must drop Governor Ifan Yokoa. I think that that would be a very tough condition to give. And I would like to just express the view that, in fact, it's not just impossible, it will further worsen the situation within the party. So Governor Wike and his supporters from Ikiti to Benue to Plateau to Portacot, because there is an army of aggrieved party members also in Rivers State there, who think that he should be the man that should have been chosen, I think they should all moderate their expectations. To the extent that Governor Wike himself has said most recently, after his return from Istanbul, that, well, his main objective is to make sure that the APC is unseated and that the PDP wins the election. There should be that single-minded focus on winning the election. And it's also in Wike's interest not to become the person that will be used as scapegoat in the event that the party loses in the 2023 general election because it's very easy now for anybody to say, oh, PDP could have won. Wait, not for Wike, who was crying like a child who lost his lollipop. No, when they offer him that lollipop, when they come to Portacot, he should just take that lollipop, lick it and calm down. I use the word lollipop, of course, you know, figuratively, because he will be a stronger person, you know, if he joins the party, having stated his grievances, if he works with the rest of the team to make sure that indeed the party triumphs. Because, look, he's a double sword. He also has something to lose. Now, beyond all of that, it's the timing. We're told that the chairman of the party is away on vacation. The presidential stand-up biara, Alajja Atiku Abubakar, is also on vacation. Well, the nine-man committee, we're told, will go to Portacot when these two major persons return. Now, Iroche Ayew, there is also an issue there where we tried to, which we tried to address yesterday. Wike's supporters are also given as a condition that the chairman of the party has to go. Their main grounds is not even the promise that was made by Iroche Ayew himself when, upon his assumption of office as chairman, he said in line with Section 3C of the PDP Constitution, if the presidential candidate were to come from the north, he would step down so that you don't have northeast, north central dominating the party, chairman of BOT also from the north, some other major officers also from the north. Now, they are even saying beyond that, beyond Fayoshi, reminding everybody of Section 3C of the PDP Constitution, they are saying that Iroche Ayew is an anti-Wike man. They are saying that Iroche Ayew was biased in the process. They're saying that he compromised his position and that they cannot work with him. Well, it's up to the party to also address that, but I hope also that that will not become another major crisis within the party. Whatever it is, the PDP needs to put its house in order. Nobody should be treated with contempt. Nobody should be treated with arrogance. The only thing that I can touch is that insisting that Yokoa should be dropped, that will not work because, as I have always argued, compatibility is an important factor in choosing your running mate. Atiku has made it clear that this is the person he can work with. Okay? And if that is the person that he's comfortable with, it doesn't matter what the committee that Governor Autumn I was referring to had decided. What if he chooses Wike and the two of them cannot work together? The presidency of Nigeria is a very, it's a monarchy, both within the purview of the constitution and also in reality. There will be other things that the party, if it wins in 2023, can find for Yusom Wike. There are other ways in which the party can use his talents. So at the end of the day, he and his supporters, they are not likely to lose. I mean, the patronage that is available in the Nigerian government, there's no such scope of patronage in any other jurisdiction, at least in most jurisdictions.
I mean, a lot has been said, Dr. Abasi, and I want to take you up on this lollipop talk. And when you say lollipop, I remember candy shops, and when I remember candy shops, I remember Willy Wonka, Charlie and the Chocolate Factory. All right? And the question here is, who is the one in charge of the chocolate factory? How is the one in charge of this chocolate factory called the PDP hand out chocolates to people that feel aggrieved? But the other thing in handing out chocolates, it has to be said that for a political party to grow, concession has to be the other of the day. So if the Wike camp says they are aggrieved, no matter how aggrieved they are, it has to be said that you still need to come to the table. The reason why you are aggrieved is because you want amends to be made. And when the person says, okay, see me from this part or look at it from our point of view, then people should come together and talk. So if they want to talk, they should be allowed to talk, making statements like, you want this, you want that, you want this, all of that will be settled at the negotiation table. And people should be careful when they make claims because I'd like to remind them the words of Trish Larry again, now use it, that if you think you are indispensable, deepest stick in a bucket of water, the hollow form to show you how people think about you. So I say that more carefully. But secondly, I think my priority in all of this is, and I don't care too much for politics and politicians, and I say that for the opportune time, what me I care about is, and speaking of books, as you guys were talking this morning, you've talked about Machiavelli, which is a good book that shows how politicians behave and how they go about their dealings and how the state is run. But one other book I think we should be reading, and most Nigerians should be reading today, is The Social Contract by Jean Jacques Rousseau, that talks about the contract between these politicians that administer the states and the people and what they ought to do for them. And I think that's what we don't talk about enough in Nigeria. The fact that people need to understand that after all is said and done, after all this political infighting, the politicians that get elected have to solve the problem of power, have to solve the problem of rising diesel, have to solve the problem of insecurity in the country because Nigerians have given them their sovereign rights to be able to do all of this as a shrine to consider Section 14, Subsection 2. And that's what we need to bring on the table and the front burner, that out of what, out of all of their politicking and all they have done, if they've, after all is said and done and they settle with themselves, what are they going to do for the Nigerian people? That's just my concern because the Nigerian people, like I say every day, are suffering. What befalls them now is the challenges they face just because they are Nigerians. So as we talk about the Machiavellian nature or the mercurial nature of those politicians, let's also talk about the fact that there is a need for a social contract, that if politicians don't do what they ought to do for the people, the people hold the power to vote them out during elections. And that's why you should go out there and vote this election because the elections matter. Don't say my vote will not be counted, please.
Okay, but in everything, this question is important. Machiavelli says a prince as a leader can be a lion, he can be a fox. It is for you to know when to apply the strategy of a fox and the strategy of a lion. But we'll see how they play the game.
The federal government yesterday maintained that removing petrol subsidy will result in unintended consequences, insisting that it is the most inauspicious time to withdraw the price buffer. Minister of Information and Culture Mr. Lai Mohammed said that many other nations were introducing measures to help citizens cope with the high oil energy prices. Lai Mohammed said that Nigeria could not be an exception despite the daily killings and attacks across the country. The minister said, we are leaving the country much more secure than we met it, noting that progress made against Boko Haram since 2015. Meanwhile, the Nigerian Midstream and Downstream Petroleum Regulatory Authority expressed worry over the rising incidents of vandalism and theft along the key pipeline conveying refined products to Morsimi, Ibado, Ore, and Ilorin fuel depots. Another shake, oh, okay, Tundu, you're taking this?
I'm not quite sure where to start. Pipeline vandalism, the improved security according to the government, or that the fuel subsidy will, removal of it will result in chaos. Okay, I think I'll start there. It was kicked down the can, wasn't it, as we established, back in January to the next president's entry? After all the politicking comes governance. If you're not successful in your politicking, you don't get the chance to have a go at governance. So it's after the elections, then we'll find out what the next administration has to do. The point I think the Minister of Information is trying to make is that desperate times call for desperate measures across the world, but that's not the same argument here. That argument does not apply here in Nigeria because when we could have afforded quite comfortably to remove the fuel subsidy, we did not. So it's not something that has been recently instituted, like Rosas has shared with us in different African countries because of the realities of the current time, that would make more sense. Our situation here is completely different. Our situation for me just smacks of maladministration, misgovernance, and that's just what it is because we know exactly what the fuel subsidy could have done for us. Trillions of naira down the drain every single year. We're talking about billions being spent on marabond refineries. I think we've had this conversation too many times. And that other conversation that's becoming really threadbare is about how security has improved under the Muhammadu Bouhari administration. No, it really hasn't because people just don't feel any safer. Yes, I think huge strides have been made in the northeast and that is to be commended. The military, our brave, you know, young men and women out there fighting for us while we all sleep in our beds have done a stellar job in the northeast. But what about the rest of the country, where yesterday, and Rosas again came with a story about businesses feeling the need to take out insurance for their executives, kidnap insurance? Have we become Mexico? Growing up, I thought Mexico was the kidnapped capital of the world, where you'd just be pinched if you're just trying to get a, I don't know, burger somewhere. And Nigeria is becoming like that. You cannot even conceive of any kind of trip, even within your own state, without thinking, what if I'm attacked? It's in everybody's mind. So I'm not sure what that means. Regarding pipeline vandalism, I think there just needs to be a lot more public orientation done on this issue because people die and they die senselessly. The most, the greatest tragedy that we've had cost the lives of a thousand Nigerians, just gone in one false sweep because of this kind of vandalism. So there has to be so much more education and so much more done economically so people don't feel the need out of poverty and desperation to stoop to such, you know, awful criminal behavior that could result in their deaths.
Dr. Abasi?
Yeah, Nigeria's original plan was to remove subsidy by July this year, and that was projected in the 2022 budget. But by January, we were told by Zainab Ahmed, the Minister of Finance and Budget Planning, that that will not happen again. And so the 2022 budget will have to be revised. Somewhere down the line, we were told that government had decided to shift its decision till 18 months later, which means that that will be a major task for the next administration to worry about. So cleverly, the Bouhari administration has protected itself. Why did the administration take that position? You'll recall a recent interview by President Muhammadu Bouhari with Bloomberg. In that interview, he addressed the issue of this fuel subsidy. He says it looks good on paper, but how about the consequences? You know, and that, you know, it's not mathematics, it's not something you can just jump into. And I guess he's quite right in that regard because if you look at the consequences that the president talks about, what will be these consequences? We're still managing with fuel subsidy, right? This year alone, close to $4 trillion naira, we're told, has been spent on subsidy. Look at where we are. To move from Ekurodu to Baga, you will need to spend up to 700 naira. From Baga to Ajah, you will spend up to 600 naira, one week. If you go back, you spend double. Wages have not gone up. Salaries are not being paid. Of course, the consequences will be measured in terms of chaos within the environment. And that chaos is very easy to define. Yesterday, we cited the example of Sri Lanka, where, as you speak now, there's no drop one liter of petrol in an entire country of 22 million that has been independent since 1948. Yesterday, motorists, drivers took over the whole of Britain. They blocked the road to Bristol, M2, M4, M48. In fact, the road leading to Somerset, drivers were playing football on motorways. In England, it looked like a piece of Africa. What is the problem? This same energy crisis because drivers are saying, we can't pay 1.9, 1.9, 1.8 pence just to buy a liter of petrol. If you remove the subsidy, you measure the consequences in terms of chaos. Last week, for the same reason, two days of protests in Accra, Ghana. So the world is going through a difficult phase and truly to remove subsidy at this time, we take us back to that Jean Jacques Rousseau, The Social Contract. The social contract cannot be to punish the people and allow them to wallow in mystery. So President Bouhari was speaking from a position of wisdom when he said, no, there are consequences, better to leave this thing for the next man who wants to come and the president of Nigeria. As for theft, Kamala Fe, the head of the Upstream and Downstream Regulatory Authority, told us that this year alone, we have spent over, we have lost over $1 billion to oil theft. It's not just that the pipelines have become dangerous, the depots, the official depots in Ore, Ibado, Morsimi, Ilorin, we can't take fuel out of those places for reasons of gross inefficiency. And that is why that man, the private depot owners, are taking advantage of the situation. We import petrol 100% in a country where crude oil flows under some people's sitting rooms and bedrooms. As they are moving from bedroom to sitting room, they are working on top of crude oil that we can't even refine the finished product. So these are the consequences of the failure of governance, of the inefficiency of the state. So when neither the president or Minister Lai Mohammed says we cannot remove fuel subsidy, eh, well, he's stating one part of the story. The other part of the story is the inefficiency of the Nigerian state and the betrayal of the people of Nigeria by their leaders.
It goes back to the social contract I keep talking about. When politicians campaign, they say too much poetry, but they don't say prose. These same people said they were going to build refineries. We heard them, they said it. It's been many years down the line now. We've not been able to build one refinery, but we constantly pay subsidy. I hear that from 2012 to now, subsidy has cost us about $40 billion. Just imagine, you take that money, put in education, put in healthcare, put in infrastructure. Some report came out yesterday that Nigeria needs about $14 billion dollar year-on-year spending to increase infrastructure. Do you know how much you'll spend? Do you know how much you impact the lives of people? But the question is, if we are serious, then we should have data. How many people even consume petrol? Because this subsidy is only on petrol. How many people consume petrol? The process is nebulous. Nobody can account for anything and it's just shrouding a lot of mystery because diesel has been deregulated. Nobody pays subsidy for diesel. So all these subsidies, what has taken $40 billion from us in the past 10 years, has just been petrol, one commodity. The same government that is saying there will be consequences, were they honest enough to even draft an energy mix for us to tell us, okay, this is how much petrol we'll consume? The same government, have they even been able to tell us how many petrol cars ply the roads in Nigeria? You see, it's easy for us to say there are going to be repercussions. Yes, there are going to be repercussions, but there are going to be bigger repercussions like we are seeing now because of this subsidy. Do we all know that states now are having lesser funds to share because of this subsidy? Do we know that the NMPC now cannot even remit anything good to the federation account any longer because of this subsidy? Do you know that Nigeria is living majorly, over 60% of our revenue are generated from taxes now because of this subsidy? And once you burn the fuel in your car, it's all over. So if we are thinking enough as a country, the first thing we should do is to even understand our energy mix, use data to know how many cars consume petrol or how many people, what amount of petrol, liters of petrol do we even consume per day in the first place and bring about transparency. If you do that and you show Nigerians the figures and you lead them on, Nigerians will be ready to understand when you try to pull out this because it's the way forward for this country. We can't continue this way. The Chinese have an adage, they say the best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago, the second best time is now. The time we ought to remove subsidy was 20 years ago, the second best time is now. And secondly, crude oil thefts, is it common Nigerians that are stealing the crude oil? What about the crude oil being shipped in super tankers across our shorelines? You see, when we are ready to tell ourselves the truth in Nigeria, we will end crude oil thefts. As long as interests are still benefiting, we will not solve our problems. Problems are there to be solved. That's why we have leadership. It is time to think through this. That's all on News Headlines.
Welcome back to the Morning Show here on the Rise News. Our dependable Rosas Adiri is here to give us an African business update. Morning, Rosas.
Good morning. How are you all doing?
Good day.
More positive today?
Shiny, happy.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we're just going to look at some, some positive news across the African continent, starting with Zenith Bank, tier one bank. That's the group managing director, CEO, collecting Best Corporate Governance Award at the World Finance Magazine Awards, Banking Awards 2022. Best Commercial Bank, it won that for the second consecutive year. So Tua was also Best Corporate Governance Bank. So this was in London at the London Stock Exchange. So congrats to Zenith Bank. Also, Fidelity Bank, Fitch has upgraded Fidelity Bank's long-term issuer default rating, I think from a B- to a B with a stable outlook. It based it on the bank's, basically, its creditworthiness, it's also its internal metrics. You've got to give credit, I guess, to the regulator as well, to the central bank for trying to stabilize the banking system. And when you consider Fitch's warning last week, where we talk about Fitch saying that inflation is, you know, a headwind to economic growth, at least against the backdrop of tepid growth in the Nigerian economy, it's at least good to see the banking sector showing signs of improved health. So congrats to Zenith, congrats to Fidelity Bank. Telcos have been given 30 days to resolve customer complaints. The Nigerian Communications Commission has issued that, say, you got, once a customer calls in and has an issue, you got to resolve that in 30 days. Although it's interesting, when you talk to people, most of the issues people have is when they are buying credits on their phones from their bank app, right? They're trying to credit their, their, their mobile phones. They're trying to credit their, 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 their mobile phones. Sometimes they get debited and then the credit doesn't show up on the phone. And sometimes you actually gotta go back to your bank, but they don't, they don't, some don't realize that and then they, they put it all on the telcos. But either way, the Nigerian Communications Commission, the regulator, wants to improve the, I guess, customer satisfaction with reverse telecommunications. And if you've had an experience using customer service, you know, over the phones or in person, you know, they just want to improve that. So you got a month before the NCC steps in. Taxes, the LIRS, Lagos Internal Revenue Service, they are saying they want to optimize their e-payment tax channels. I think as of August the first of this year, it's all, it's all, it's all electronic with respect to, you know, making sure that businesses file their taxes on time and making sure that essentially they can track tax payments. I think they've even given an extension as to filing taxes. So, I mean, you know Lagos State's position as the number one internally degenerated revenue states in the country. You know Lagos State's, you know, position here as a commercial capital of the country. So they're doing what they can in order to improve tax collections and technology is, is the way to go in that regard. Speaking of tech, in Kenya, M-Pesa is making inroads with respect to challenging Kenyan banks on FX fees. So you know, they've partnered with Visa in order to allow Kenyans to purchase goods from overseas. And I believe that they are charging, if you look at the interbank rates for FX fees, I think they're charging about one hundred and twenty-one shillings per dollar to make purchases from overseas. The average, I guess, what if you look at what the other banks are charging is anywhere from one twenty-seven to one twenty-eight. So you have to think, and I think they're leveraging on Visa's network to do that. But as far as the future and what this means for, you know, what this, I mean, again, this is unique to Kenya. We've got bank-led, you know, financial inclusion systems in other African nations. So maybe it can be replicated, but hey, Safaricom, M-Pesa, they are, they're doing it.
Yes, and this is what I keep telling you, that fintechs at a point will definitely cannibalize the banks. And it goes back to that long analogy I always make. You know, because you see what M-Pesa is doing, they are eating into that market, they are giving value, they have a good network with Visa. And you are able to connect across board, so it's quicker, so it's faster, they are more nimble, they are more agile. The banks will go through a lot of regulatory bottlenecks and the likes, but they will just go straight to it.
So you're all in on fintechs?
I'm all in on fintech, that's the future. I mean, look at it, look at the numbers, look at the new fintech banks that are just starting up in Nigeria and see their skill. Please, I want to ask you a question, which bank is bigger than Flutter with in Nigeria today?
Yeah, I mean, but.
How many banks, I asked you.
But as far as the legacy.
Eh, it's not, the comparison is, is, yeah, yeah, I give it, I give that to you.
But that's based on valuations, right? The banks still have legacy, I mean, every, every one of us has a bank here, right? If you think about your day-to-day transactions, it goes to the banks, right?
It's just a mindset, when you think of day-to-day transaction, day-to-day transaction can be applications, can be anything.
Yeah.
There are a lot of people that keep most of their money in buying stock options like Bamboo and the like.
Right.
And they take money from there for day-to-day transactions. So the idea of a bank itself is fast waning away. The greatest bank now is your application and putting your money through wire forms.
Right, right.
And that's just, and that's what the fintechs are doing. So it's best for the banks to get on board before, because when you look at it, I think the only last layer I still see the banks play a major role is lending.
Okay, look at what GTB is doing, GT Co is doing with Habari, right? If you think of the whole core structure and those interbinural.
GT Co went to set up Squadron.
Eh, because of the fintech competition, eh, so but the banks can compete now, so they're.
We are talking the same language, why didn't they just sit down and.
Right, 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 I think they can compete, I think they can compete, yeah.
Congratulations to Zenith.
To Zenith Bank, yes.
Zenith is not new to winning awards.
Yeah.
And I also note the point that the managing director in receiving that award dedicated it to Jim Ovea.
Yeah.
Jim Ovea is the founder and the group chairman of, you know, Zenith Bank. And he's been very, he's shown great commitment, either at the level of his own business or in terms of macroeconomic issues in Nigeria. Fidelity also got what looked like a commendation, feature rating, moving them from B minus to B and talking about the, you know, the bank's strong financial foundation. So it's good news that the banks are doing well. But we still need to deepen intermediation in Nigeria.
Yes.
You know, for the benefit of, you know, this entire society and for customers. In terms of intermediation, you can say tier one, tier two, we're still way behind compared to other countries. Now, that's one. Number two, the telcos, the Nigerian Communications Commission, given a window of thirty days within which subscribers' complaints can be resolved. Well, good idea, anything that can, you know, improve on customer satisfaction, consumer satisfaction. In a country where the average consumer of goods and services is badly treated and consumers are not necessarily well protected, anything in that direction to defend the interest of the consumer is good. Particularly in the telecom sector, where many Nigerians are agonizing in more recent times about drop costs, about, you know, unnecessary charges, network failure. And the most notorious that many are facing now, this linkage of your national identification number with your phone. It's such a nightmare, okay? But thirty days is such a long period. I mean, what kind of complaints are you dealing with for thirty days? People are busy, for heaven's sake.
Right.
And that's why the National Association of Telecom Subscribers is saying it should be possible for these telcos to be able to address complaints within a week. Anything beyond a week, I think is over, amounts to overindulgence on the part of the parties involved. And then finally, Lagos State is talking about a one-stop window for e-tax or what they call enterprise tax solutions, where it's not new, it's been there.
Yeah.
It's just that from August one, this is going to be the major channel. Yeah, what is the proposal? To ensure greater efficiency, right? Make better use of technology, fine. But the Lagos Internal Revenue Service, we need to explain this to people. There should be a lot in terms of public enlightenment, so that people will know that this is the direction in which government is going. Because you know, anything that carries deliberate tax, you know, Nigerians are very nervous about it. So public enlightenment is very important.
Sundu?
Well, thank you for the good stories today, very, you know, cheerful, upbeat. Yes, congratulations are in order for Zenith Bank and Fidelity Bank. But I also am a little bit concerned about this NCC thirty days.
Yeah.
Yes, it's important to note that NCC, according to their report, I called last year, they were saying that NCC solved over ninety percent of customer complaints. And I'm thinking, what then are the actual service providers doing if customer complaints have to be solved by NCC? So a lot more work needs to be done in that regard.
Indeed.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
And find that point, they say, well, if it, except you are looking for records that go back two years, the services should be rendered free.
Ah.
So this should not become an opportunity for extortion.
Right.
When you go to the telcos and they'll tell you, oh, you have to pay ten thousand naira. No, NCC has said we will not pay, oh, instead we're looking for records for up to two years.
That's important.
These points need to be made.
Yeah, so put it out there.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Moving on to more business update, Michael Wilson joins us now from London. Good morning, Mr. Wilson.
Good morning, good morning. Shares in Asia-Pacific rising, Australia's central bank did exactly what everybody thought it would do and raised races to the third successive month they've done that. Japan and China both saw service industries doing reasonably well. South Korea's, South Korea's index, the Kospi, up one point one three percent. Come on to South Korea in a moment. And other, 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 other not doing too badly, the Nikkei up about half a percent. Hang Seng up about half a percent too. Now, as far as South Korea is concerned, I'll, well, actually, I'll, I'll come on to the inflation thing. Most importantly, China's vice premier Li He and the US Treasury Secretary Janet Yellen have been holding high-level macroeconomic talks. They've been doing virtually, not an enormous amount of detail about what, what was discussed. But the China talked about US tariffs and sanctions on China, on geopolitics. The US apparently didn't mention tariffs or sanctions, but was noting the global economic impact of Russia. Again, no, no great detail on those, it may come out later, but it's good that the two countries are actually talking. Now, back to South Korea, and inflation hitting a twenty-four-year-high there. Expectations of a big raise in interest rates there. These days, that's, that's about one and a half percent. Consumer Price Index rose six percent in June from a year ago. It's the fastest pace since nineteen eighty-eight. And once again, it's exceeding the usual two percent target that central banks seem to have. The, the BOK is, is no, no exception to that. And, and, and it's likely that there will be a fifty-point increase in interest rates fairly soon there. Turkey's annual inflation up to almost, get this, seventy-nine percent. Inflation as far as transport is concerned is over a hundred percent. Soaring consumer prices have hit the eighty-four million people who live in Turkey very hard indeed. It's, it's really, it's, it's extraordinary this, because what, what, what they're, what they're looking at as far as Turkey is concerned is, yes, as far as NATO is concerned, it's a sort of uncomfortable member. It's certainly been playing a lot of cards. President Erdogan has been sacking three central government bankmen, bank governors who don't agree with his lack, with his lowering interest rates rather than raising them to control inflation. But there are rumors this morning that Turkey may be, and given that the lira is down a lot, but they could be crucial in, in getting grain supplies back from, from Ukraine. Apparently, they've come into, come into possession of some stolen grains, stolen in inverted commas, stolen Russian grain. They may well be returning that. And it may be that discussions are taking place between Turkey and Russia about how the two of them can somehow broker a deal whereby grain comes back on the market. That would be quite a big development. But again, a rather, a rather noisy and not, not very friendly neighbor, quite honestly. But then again, it is in NATO. As far as the United States is concerned, obviously, Independence Day holiday yesterday. Futures up very, very slightly after another losing week. Modest gains on Friday, but will that, will that be repeated today? Really, the big one is the, is the US jobs report, which comes out at the end of the week. And that's, that's what people are actually waiting for. Surging gasoline prices in the United States are causing what economists call demand destruction. In other words, people are saying, I do not, I'm not, I'm simply not going to pay those sorts of prices. I'd rather go without the car for a little while. This is persistent high price, high price or tight supplies eventually lead to a drop in demand, and that's happening right now. Turning to the EU very, very briefly, Germany's experienced its first trade deficit since nineteen ninety-one. Again, down to the rising cost of traditional products. Traditionally, Germany looked as an exporting powerhouse, no longer. The UK National Train Driver's strike now may be the first in twenty-five years. Huge disruption, disruption by protesters on the motorway yesterday. Further reverence of disruption caused by rising inflation. The drivers have been offered two percent plus productivity savings. Inflation is much, is much higher than that. TSA is also threatening strike action. But the RMT, there are, there are a number of unions involved in this. The RMT are going to apparently meet Network Rail on Monday to see what they can do about this. And finally, oil steady in Asia, it's, it's actually coming up again. But the day is, I mean, quite honestly, you know, rising and falling. Are we going to see the days of a hundred dollars a barrel again? Well, maybe not, given that Russian sanctions are still there and OPEC's production targets look like being a bit of a fantasy. It's a very leaky market, so the global view is that Brent will not be under a hundred barrel a day for quite some time. That's the global view this morning.
Right, so I'd like to ask all of this, because all of this pretty much looks like the early nineties once again, or the late seventies, anytime we had economic crisis like that. But I'm really concerned with all of this going on, with all those strikes, we're not being able to meet demands, you know, of workers by the government. British government revenue twenty twenty-one still tops over eight hundred billion. And the government is incurring a deficit year on year. And with inflation sky-high, and you're also having a very, very big recession, I think, will be coming up. I mean, how do we make sense of all of this? How does the Boris Johnson and Rishi Sunak government make sense of all of this? Because the government spending is stopping about a trillion, government revenue about eight hundred, deficit high. There's still some borrowing going on, plus the three hundred billion borrowed during Covid. How is the government making sense of all of this?
I know, it's, it's, it's incredible, isn't it? When you, when you do the maths, it's, it does, does actually get rather frightening. I suppose what it is, is one, one problem at a time. I think what, what the government is saying here, whether you believe it or not, or whether you actually agree with it or not, is the fact that they're leaving inflation and they're leaving fuel cuts and things like that till the budget in the autumn. They've obviously got their eye on the next election, which is a long, long way away. But as far as the man in the street is concerned and, and people in the streets are concerned, it really is getting very, very difficult indeed, and it will continue to do so. The cost of living is rising, as I noted, in the United States. And, you know, demand destruction is already taking place there. People are not going to the pumps and they're saying, you know what? We're just not going to drive, I'm not going to pay those prices. And if I have to do it, I mean, some, some people are now campaigning that if, if your journey is less than a mile, then you shouldn't be using a car. And so it goes on, really. I mean, this is, this is something that individual families are going to have to come to terms with. What it all depends on, and this is really difficult to get one's head around, but this is, this is life, is if, if other countries still feels though they will lend an economy money, then that economy will borrow. Now, I would suggest that, that the UK is getting to the end of the rope as far as that belief is concerned, particularly as the central bank is seen to be, has seemed to have been very, very slow in dealing with inflation. We've often talked about the Volcker factor in all this. I don't think that's going to happen, I think that will be too severe for any economy right now. But I, I feel as though we, we can't but help but a faster rise in interest rates and all the difficulties that that will actually, will, will ensue from that. And as I've been saying, you know, South Korea's, South Korea will be joining in. Royal Bank of Australia has been joining in too. All around the world, money supply is getting tight, and that's what they think will bring inflation down. We shall see.
What are talking? Inflation, seventy-nine percent. The Turkish lira has shared half of its value. Transportation cost is one twenty-three percent. Now, how much worse can it get? Is this, you know, receivable answer, gamble coming on stock? And what should we expect in Turkey? Another situation such as we now have in Sri Lanka, where, you know, hopelessness is walking on stilts on the streets of Colombo. That's one. The second thing has to do with this argument between Sarkisama and also Mayor Sadiq Khan. Sarkisama is saying, oh, rule out going back to, to European Union, to the single market, which some analysts have blamed for the crisis that the UK faces now. That perhaps if, you know, the UK had remained in, in the EU, maybe it will not be as the OECD has predicted. And even Andrew Bailey himself has admitted the worst performing economy in the whole of Europe. But Sadiq Khan disagrees with Sarkisama. The leaders also think that going back to the EU will probably have to solve the problem. Particularly now that drivers are protesting about fuel prices and motorways have been turned into football fields by protesters, even a pretty part of things, they should be punished.
Well, as, as far as going back to the EU's concern, I mean, that's cloud cuckoo land, isn't it? What, what, what would the EU do? It was bad enough getting out of it. What, what, what ruinous terms would they decide that Britain, coming back with its tail between its legs, joining, rejoining the EU would actually be? I mean, that has to be fantasy land, and it's something which I don't think would be very good. I think the critics of Brexit are absolutely right still. Unfortunately, it's happened, so let's get on with it. But they are right, the, 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 the advantages have not actually revealed themselves. And what been, what have been trumpeted as trade triumphs straight after Brexit were already in, in the, in, in the mix, were already actually taking place. They probably would have happened, whether or not Brexit had taken place or not. But going back, absolutely not an option. You've got it, you've got to look forward. The past is the past, what's done is done. I, I feel now that, you know, however bad or good it is, we have to keep going with, with the path that we're in. Reversing it would be absolutely ruinous. And, and I, I just, I just feel that anybody suggesting that must be living in, in cloud, in cloud cuckoo land. As far as Turkey's concerned, yeah, I mean, it's, it's very difficult, isn't it? I mean, he's, he's sacked a number of central bank managers who don't, don't, don't believe, don't believe Erdogan's view that interest rates are iniquitous. They are and they aren't. I mean, it's, I, I, I get, I get where he's coming from, but the problem, but, and it is a huge economy. It has a massive manufacturing base. We, we, we don't hear a great. We don't hear a great deal about that. I'm not excusing what's going on. I'm saying it is an extraordinary country. But I feel as though, as far as NATO is concerned, it's now actually could be, possibly, it could be entering quite constructive talks with Russia as far as the international grain markets are concerned. So, I mean, I've no idea what Turks would do if they were to take to the streets. I suspect they'd probably be banged up in jail if they did that because that's the kind of regime that it has. But, you know, these days, you can't choose the ethics of what you believe to be the ethics of your part, of your political and also trade partners. I feel as though we're entering difficult times, and Turkey could be, could be a way out of this. Remember, it is the one country that is not allowed in the EU, wants desperately to be in the EU, and is seen as an eastern flank protecting the EU from Muslim extremists and also from Russia as well. Whether we like it or not, we can, you know, calculate what happens with high inflation and all the rest of it. The fact of it is, it's becoming a very, very important part of NATO.
I like that nuanced analysis there. And this is exactly why, in spite of everything going on with the economy, Erdogan will probably win in the election next year. But I know you don't like talking politics. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for your time this morning. Now, Cavitan Offshore Support Group, a leading provider of aviation and maritime services in Nigeria's oil and gas sector, is set to position itself as a leader in the country's maritime transport sector with introduction of its Cavitan water bus. A Rise News on New Sunday caught up with the company's CEO at the ongoing Nigeria Oil and Gas Conference in the nation's capital, Abuja.
Operating since 2002, Cavitan Offshore Support Group is a force to reckon with in Nigeria's aviation and maritime support services sector within the country's oil and gas industry. As the first fully integrated offshore support company in Sub-Saharan Africa with a focus on the oil and gas industry, the company says it is now positioned to harness the abundant opportunities available on the continent and the global markets.
One of the things that Covid and this switch from fossil, this gradual switch shift from fossil energy has taught us is that we needed to, in order to remain financially buoyant, we needed to diversify our portfolio. And the only way to diversify our portfolio, given the industry, is to target or identify where there are gaps or opportunities. It was a huge cost center for Cavitan. We had to fly out aircraft for major checks and overhauls. We realized there was actually a huge gap in the market locally for that. And that sort of gave rise to the maintenance, repair and overhaul center that we have built in Lagos.
With a formidable asset base and the right infrastructural support and technology to improve efficiency in the industry, its maintenance, rehabilitation, overhaul and training service is a deliberate portfolio diversification poised to keep it relevant in the game.
What we do there is we do all our major repairs for Cavitan. We actually are able to also do third-party maintenance for other companies, other organizations. We recently signed up the Presidential Air Fleet of the Benetia Republic. We've done work with, we're doing work with Nigerian Air Force. We actually just recently trained 12 of their engineers. We're also a free trade zone, meaning people, and that's why the attraction for the Benetia Republic is there. And also, there's an attraction for foreign operators to come in and use Cavitan's facilities because you don't have to go through paying duties and clearing spares and things like that.
Cavitan Aviation began with 80% export trade pilots. Today, it boasts of 75% Nigerian pilots, including female pilots who among the best in the industry. This is evident at their exhibition stand here at the Nigeria Oil and Gas Conference in Abuja.
I'm confused already. I'm going to crash. And I did. Ha, interesting. I'll just stick to my day job. Yeah, this is clearly not for me, but you don't have to. If you have a flair for aeronautics, here at the Cavitan Stand at the Nigerian Oil and Gas Conference, taking place at the Abuja International Conference Center, you get a chance to know what it feels to fly a helicopter. And there's more. You get to talk to professionals in the game.
Big on training, Cavitan owns the Thales Reality H Level D AW 139 Full Flight Simulator, which is the only one in Africa. At the exhibition stand, visitors got a feel of a liftoff on one of its training gears.
No, I just think that I don't want to affect the P and L of Cavitan.
Poised to make an impact in Nigeria's maritime space, the Cavitan 40-seater water bus with eco sounders and hybrid chairs with a reinforced fiberglass body is the new kid on the block and proudly built in Nigeria.
We operate in the oil sector, so we know and appreciate safety, quality. We operate in probably the most difficult sector of the oil and gas industry, which is aviation. And the idea was to bring that same culture into our marine business. And we were able to get the right people in to support the project. And 12 months down the line, we have a 40-seater, 300, 40-seater water bus. It's flat-bottomed, so it's pretty stable. It's got segregated hulls filled with foam. So basically, if it hits a wreck or if it hits anything, it doesn't sink.
Nice, that's very interesting.
That's the idea. Some people say it's unsinkable, but it just means it takes a lot of, a longer time for water to seep through, so it's extremely safe.
It's an addition to their fleet of businesses. And the beauty of it all is that it's fabricated here in Nigeria, and that's what's important. And one of these days, I will take a test ride as a waterman myself to observe the boat properly, and then we'll take it off from there.
For the company, the best is yet to come as it looks beyond being a leader in Nigeria's oil and gas sector to providing world-class logistics solutions.
On air, land and sea, Cavitan is offering first-class services to diverse industries with a state-of-the-art facility to support Nigeria's local content drive. Only Sunday, A Rise News.
Right, lovely and wonderful report, I must have to say that about A Rise Sunday. And I'm happy that Nigerians are doing great things. All right, for updates on Covid-19 pandemic, Adeswa Morawais here. What else, Adeswa, great to have you. Good morning. Aloha.
Good morning, Rafa, great to be here again. Good morning, Tundu, and good morning, Dr. Batty.
Morning.
Great. Now, there have now been over 515 million Covid-19 cases globally and more than 6.3 million deaths. The pandemic, as we know, is far from over with at least 110 countries seeing an increase in infection in the last week. And that's according to the WHO, the World Health Organization. While here in Nigeria, the country has released its bi-weekly epidemiological report for the 6th to the 19th of June. Now, what does this report reveal? It shows that the country tested 75,000 samples and 445 returned positive. There was one death reported in that period from the Federal Cathedral Territory, Abuja. Now, 17 of the 904 inbound travelers for the period tested positive, while 52 of the 3,900 outbound travelers tested positive. This means that there are more people testing positive that are living in Nigeria than we have them coming into the country. And that's something to think about. There's more Covid with us than people that have been coming in recent times. Well, here are the top five states making progress towards vaccinating all eligible population in their states. They are Nasserawa, Jigawa, Kano, Kaduna and Quara. Now, Kano has fully vaccinated over 4 million of its people. Kaduna, over 1.7 million people. In Jigawa, it's over 3 million. In Nasserawa, it's 1.4 million. And in Quara, it's 605,964 people. The population in the states play a critical role in these numbers we're seeing. As you know, vaccination does have to do with vaccination. So you wonder why Quara has 605,000 people fully vaccinated and it's making the top five spots? While, for instance, Ogun State has vaccinated, fully vaccinated, almost 800,000 people, yet it's on the 10th position. Well, you look at the total population of these two states, then you understand what I'm talking about. And of course, Rafa always hammering on Lagos, and rightfully so, as the epicenter of the pandemic here in Nigeria. Lagos has only fully vaccinated a mere 1.5 million people. But that's not the news out of Lagos this morning. To contribute to the fight against Covid-19 and to benefit more Nigerians as well as Chinese, well, the Chinese community in Lagos has donated seven ventilators to the State Ministry of Health. The Permanent Secretary of the Ministry, Dr. Ulushe Goboye, made this disclosure. The ministry said the donations have now been made to four hospitals. Meanwhile, the Chinese Consular General to Nigeria, Chu Maoming, said there's still a long way to go to improve intensive care treatment in African countries due to the very high costs and, of course, the training of the personnel who will use these ventilators. And so China is donating this equipment to help. Meanwhile, two other medical groups have offered to install the seven ventilators and train the personnel that will use these ventilators as well. So that's a plus for Lagos to fight not just Covid but other medical emergencies. They'll be needing ventilators anytime soon. Very quickly, out of Nigeria, Hong Kong's new leader, John Lee, has granted his first press conference since taking office. And he revealed that Hong Kong is looking to shorten Covid-19 quarantine for travelers while still aiming to curb the spread of the virus and prevent hospitals from being overwhelmed. At the moment, most travelers going to Hong Kong are required to serve a seven-day mandatory quarantine at designated hotels. And I know Michael spoke about Australia raising their rates when it comes to finances. Well, if you're traveling to Australia any moment from now, you no longer need to declare Covid-19 vaccination status prior to departure from your country nor complete a digital passenger declaration form when entering the country from the 6th of July, which is tomorrow. But of course, that will take effect much earlier, given the time zone differences. Now, unvaccinated visa holders, including foreign tourists, will not require a travel exemption as well. This marks the end of Australia's Covid-19 border restrictions, first implemented over two years ago in trying to curb the virus in the country. Although, I must add, national carrier Kantas will continue to insist on all its international passengers being fully vaccinated. You will also require to wear masks when on board either by air or by road or on sea. Back to guys.
All right, Adeswa, I've always been complaining. And for me, it's quite scary, the numbers coming out of Lagos as regards vaccination. This is the epicenter of Covid-19. 1.5 million out of a population estimated to be 22 million. That's not good enough. At some point, Lagos used to be up there, but states like Quara, Nasserawa and the likes, you know, have trumped Lagos. And Lagos is just sixth, language is sixth or seventh, and the vaccine uptake is low. Just to further extrapolate your data, Adeswa, I can bet you, almost for free, all right, that most of those numbers that you say are increasing of people living in Nigeria, most of them went through the Lagos airport out. And they are the ones that are getting tested, and they see that there's an surge in Covid-19 cases amongst that population. So what it means invariably, and I don't want to scare anybody, is that Covid is back in Lagos. The only difference is that we're not recording as much deaths as before. And what can we do? We've seen that the science works. If for those that, anyway, I don't think there should be doubters now, but that the science works, just check empirical data from the time that the first vaccine rollout happened worldwide to now and see the drop in Covid-19 cases. That's to show you that the science does work. So what can we use to spur people to go out there, take the vaccination? I mean, I've thought about everything in the books. I just want people to take the vaccination. Maybe in few queues, I don't know. Maybe, you know, can we even do churches? Can we even do mosques? Because you've got churches that gather a lot of people. In Lagos, I know of a church that gathers 30,000 people every Sunday. Maybe if we do that church a couple of times, I don't know, and some other churches across. Maybe it's time to speak to religious leaders now. Maybe that's, yeah, that's another approach. Nigerians are very religious people. Speak to Christian leaders, Muslim leaders, you know, probably traditional worshipers leaders too. You know, speak to all of them across board, and let's see we can get them on board because people need to be jabbed.
Hong Kong.
Yeah.
John Lee, who is now the new leader of Hong Kong, taking over from Karimam, held his first press conference this morning. And yes, he talked about Covid. But he said, look, Hong Kong is an international city. And what he intends to do is to see how he can balance the risks with the fact that this is a major financial center in that part of the world. But at the same time, you know, he said a number of other things that may be controversial. He's now, you know, the new leader. And he wants to go back to Article 23 of the Basic Law, which caused a lot of problems in 2019 when Beijing imposed, you know, a national security law on Hong Kong, leading to disruptions in that environment. Well, maybe this time around, they will be able to get it through because the parliament is pro-Begin. But that will cause a lot of problems. I think it's better off, you know, focusing on housing estates that he wants to worry about. Hong Kong being the most expensive property market in the world. But truly, you know, Covid-19 cases are going up in Hong Kong where you are required to quarantine, you know, when you go there. They now have an average of about 1,000 cases daily. And yesterday, Monday, they had a record of 1,814. And last week, when Xi Jinping, the Chinese president, visited, you know, there was a report of, you know, a party member, Steve Ho, who reported later that he came down with Covid-19. So it's an issue there. In Australia, yes. Australia, the new measure will come as a big relief to many Australians, many of whom at the point were stranded outside the country and could not even come home, either for summer or for any activity. Now, what they've removed is a digital procedure that you need to go through. It's an app, you know, that they made compulsory for anybody trying to enter Australia. But as you pointed out, certain measures are still in place, particularly at the state level and also in terms of transportation. As for Nigeria, well, we can't overstate the matter. The Nigerian government, through the MPACDA, launched a program for mass vaccination. It's unfortunate that we have not seen the effect of that. Despite the fact that everyone is making a donation to Nigeria, the Chinese Embassy just gave Lagos state ventilators, you know, and others, as we pointed out yesterday, have been making contributions. So the issue is not absence of vaccines or inadequity of vaccine doses. It's just to manage the situation better. And on the list of the five performing states, Lagos used to be there. Ogun used to be there, but what happened? They're no longer there. It's the same states in the north that were a bit reluctant previously that are now, you know, top of that list. So I guess, as you were saying yesterday, maybe if we introduce the pepper soup and jollof rice mechanism as a way of motivating people, maybe that will help.
I just wish everybody had taken the vaccine before now. You know, we've been talking about the fact that the Omicron variant is resistant and is a really clever virus and actually tries to avoid and evade. If everybody had taken a vaccine, we would not be having this conversation. But what really are the chances that when we have the second generation of Covid vaccines, the uptake will be greater? Will people actually have learned their lesson by that point? Or will the death tolls continue to mount? I mean, it's really quite discouraging.
I agree. Thank you very much, Adeswa.